No, no quorum yet.
Not yet, waiting on Matt.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the July 23 special virtual meeting of the Rochester Planning Commission. On this pleasant summer evening, we have assembled a quorum barely and we're ready to proceed with our agenda. And with that, I will ask Sienna, who is acting as the clerk tonight, to call the roll.
Chairman McGee.
Here.
Vice Chair Eric Lord is excused. Mayor Bixson.
Here.
Mayor Protim and Secretary Dean Bavacca is excused. Patricia Clark Martin.
Here.
David Gassen is excused. Christian Hauser.
Here.
Sarah King is excused. Matthew Stone.
Here.
We have the quorum.
Thank you, Sienna.
You're welcome.
Join me at this point in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. Here at the beginning of the meeting, I just want to again repeat that this is a virtual meeting of the Rochester Planning Commission. As authorized by Governor Whitmer's executive order sometime earlier this year. That allowed meetings not in person of public bodies such as this one. And I want to point out to the public and again to the commissioners, any action taken at this meeting such as votes actually do count. We were talking before the meeting, we don't know how much longer this executive order is going to last, it's about to expire, but many of those orders have been renewed when they're near expiration and given the current situation with COVID, I personally expect that this will be extended further. Another couple of months. Mayor, you're shaking your head, I think you probably concur with that.
Yeah, I yeah, I mean, I could make the case that this could go through the rest of the year, but you know, we don't know.
Well, drawing people into rooms, enclosed rooms is so I suspect it'll be extended. In any event, we're broadcast live on the community television network. And for those who have joined us, you'll see that there's a telephone number included at the bottom. You're free to call that in at any time just to monitor the meeting. Or if you have any questions, particularly during a couple of public comment periods. Feel free to push them forward and we will, we will put you on the floor, so to speak, so that you can join the meeting and tell us what's on your, on your agenda. With that, number three is public comment. I'm going to ask Sienna if we've had any contact either in writing or electronically from anyone from the public who has any information for us.
No, we have Matt.
Okay, thank you very much. We're going to move on to number four, approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of July 6, 2020. Commissioners, if you had the opportunity to review the minutes. And if so, any discussion here?
So moved.
So it's been moved by who? Okay, moved and supported. I would just make a comment that there was an exchange here in that meeting with Dr. Atala and Mr. Gassen that is not in these minutes and it was key and I think it should be included. Whether there are just a few comments about it or whatever the case may be, it was a public exchange and I think for my own purposes, I think that should be included. So I'm suggesting that we amend our motion to approve as amended and ask the clerk from last week to review that discussion and add something for us to consider at the next meeting.
I would make that motion.
Okay.
Yeah, second.
So that's been moved and supported. Okay, any further discussion on the minutes? The roll call, please.
Christian Hauser.
Approved, yes.
Mayor Bigfin.
Yes.
Chairman McGee.
Yes.
Patricia Clark Martin.
Yes.
Matthew Stone.
Yes.
Thank you very much. Number five, consideration of a site plan and special exception to change existing office space into residential apartments to be located at 134 West University. We'll turn that over to Vidya.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At the city's request, we have reviewed a proposal from Mr. Zantner of Yamazaki Inc. to convert existing office space into residential apartments. The building is located on the north side of West University, west of Main Street intersection and the Zone CBD, which is the Central Business District. If you recall, the applicant previously appeared before you at your June 1st meeting for preliminary plan consideration. And then again for a public hearing at the July 6 meeting. At the July 6 meeting, several issues were raised with regard to compliance with building codes specifically with regard to accessibility and other details. The applicant was provided with feedback for changes to the plan and they have submitted a revised plan at this time for your review. Now, as I previously had noted, the site is occupied by an existing three-story T-shaped building. The first street with street frontage is occupied by a restaurant and medical offices, which are to be retained. However, the second story offices and the basement are to be converted into one and two-bedroom apartments and a few studio apartments. Professional and administrative offices are permitted by right in this district. Upper story apartments are considered as a special land use, as a special exception use and are subject to specific provisions in the ordinance. The ordinance does not specifically address basement apartments. However, the intent of the Central Business District in specifying upper story apartments is to have pedestrian interaction with the businesses at the street level. The proposed building does comply with it. Therefore, we believe that it's a reasonable interpretation to say that the basement apartments are permissible. With regard to access and circulation, this was the biggest point of discussion at the last meeting. There are two access drives of West University, one on each end of the building. Now, the east access drive is an entrance and the west access drive is an exist, exit. The east access drive leads currently to an angled parking lot with an aisle width of 14 feet, which is non-conforming because for one-way motion of vehicles, you require a minimum of 15 feet. We have previously said it's just a foot, leave it as it is because it's an established circulation pattern. The revised plan at this time has reduced the landscape area that abuts the basement window wells, which results in the aisle width going from 14 feet to 19 feet. However, the parking that was previously angled has now been changed to a 90-degree angle, if you look at the site plan, to accommodate four additional parking spaces. 90-degree or right-angle parking implies two-way movement of vehicles. The proposed change will actually
Could you move this a bit to the left so we can see that part of the plan better? Yeah, keep going if you would.
Yes, if you could see the access drive is coming in, Sienna, if you could point out. The parking spaces that are just there currently are all angled. It has now been changed to create four additional spaces and two handicap spaces over there. But normally, we would say we would recommend and encourage 90-degree parking in this case. When you do 90-degree parking, the minimum aisle width required is 22 feet. We still have only 19 feet, so it must be one-way circulation. That's what the applicant also intends. But when you stripe it like this, it automatically implies two-way movement. You will have vehicles that are not familiar with the site attempting to go down the wrong side of the one-way. Plus, we have a concern that the basement apartments which have window wells, that is the only way they are going to get light into the apartments by reducing that green belt over there and putting the bumper blocks right up to the edge of the window wells. If you have a larger vehicle parked there, it's going to completely block the view light and air in the basement window wells. So our recommendation is the applicant retain the existing angled parking. Make the aisle 15 feet wide instead of 14 that it will comply with. And add the remaining four feet back into the landscape belts that was previously shown. That would be a good design for the building and also a good improvement for those basement apartments. The area, the rest of the parking lot on the site is designed for two-way movement of vehicles and the aisle widths comply, which is acceptable. With regard to pedestrians' circulation, there is an existing sidewalk along West University. It's got a variable width. Now, the access, the building can be accessed by an entrance of West University. At the last meeting, there was significant discussion about converting the entrance of University Drive into a barrier-free accessible entrance and whether it is required. Subsequent to the meeting, this question was forwarded to the city's building official and he came back with the information that since over 50% of the building is undergoing a change of use, basically the top floor and the basement are both being changed, so that is about 75%. Three of the four entrances must be made barrier-free accessible. That is required under the state building code. So the applicant has at this time revised the plan to provide a ramp at the West University entrance. And that entrance too will be barrier-free accessible. In addition to that entrance, also there is a barrier-free ramp on the north side of the building, of the main aisle and the same thing on, I'm sorry, on the east side of the building and one on the west side of the building. The north side is not barrier-free accessible, so three out of the four entrances will be barrier-free accessible at this time. We do recommend that the design of the ramp be reviewed by the building officials to make sure it meets the state building code requirements. With regard to parking, based upon the use of the building, the site requires a total of 116 spaces. The revised plan at this time reduces one, one-bedroom unit and has added a two-bedroom unit instead of it. The note clarifying that the restaurant does not have a dedicated bar area to serve patrons has been added to the plan. Now, the plan indicates a total of 130 parking spaces. The previous iteration of this plan had 124. The six additional spaces are a result of turning it into 90-degree parking on the east side of the building, which added four spaces. And one space has got added to the northeast side near 543 Main Street and one space has got added to the west parking lot. Now, the planning commission had noted that the parking spaces that are on the northeast corner of the lot are really of no use to this building because cannot expect somebody in a wheelchair to traverse all that distance to the building entrance to the ramp. And Dr. Atala had also mentioned that those spaces are typically for use by the people at 543 Main Street. So we require that those two handicap parking spaces be removed from the total parking count. Don't count them because they cannot be used for this building. Convert it back into angled parking and the site will still more than meet the required parking. The revisions to the parking counts based on what we have stated in our letter needs to be clarified. The parking spaces are 18 feet deep and the aisle width is compliant on the north side of the site. On the west side of the site, instead of 22 feet, it is 20 feet. Once again, this is an existing non-conformity. We do not recommend altering it, which would create a loss of spaces that are closest to the building. The property does have a dual dumpster enclosure on the northwest corner, which is shared by multiple properties. A copy of the shared dumpster agreement has already been provided to the city. The facade changes, the applicant did present artistic renderings at the last meeting and also made an extensive presentation. All of the changes that are proposed definitely enhance and make the building an attractive addition to the downtown. With regard to lighting, this was also discussed in detail. The plan proposed multiple wall-mounted fixtures, which were more of a shoebox style typically seen in commercial or industrial lots, not exactly on a downtown lot. The doctor had expressed concerns that the building has been subject to vandalism because of inadequate illumination. However, we had suggested that an alternate fixture style suitable for the downtown be used, which will still provide the required illumination for safety, but be in keeping with all the improvements that are being made to the building. At this time, the applicant has proposed a decree to walls cones. If you look at the site plan, it's on the top of your site plan, the detail of the walls cones. It's an attractive feature and will definitely add to the appearance of the building. The applicant has submitted a landscape plan for the site. And there are landscape areas around the foundation of the building and to the north. There is also landscaping along West University frontage. There are existing trees shown within landscape islands. Based on a review of the aerial images, the trees do meet the minimum size requirement. One of the things we had recommend was addition of a tree to the landscape island that is closest to the dumpster, which currently does not have a tree. The revised plan does include an autumn blaze maple tree on that island. And also includes a variety of perennial flowering shrubs in the islands and along the building foundation. A clarification we did want from the architect is a few of the islands are labeled as stone cobble border. Now, I'm not sure exactly what that means. Is it a ground treatment? Or is it bordering those islands? So that clarification is required. And a note regarding landscape maintenance, as stated here, needs to be added. Since these landscape islands do not have irrigation, the clause regarding landscape maintenance is very important because it is enforceable by the code enforcement officer. The plan does not include any information on any new signage at this time. If the applicant is desirous of advertising the apartments, they should make sure that the signage is submitted to the city administration for approval prior to installation. And finally, upper story apartments have a minimum floor area requirement. No unit can be less than 500 square feet. And the architect has confirmed on the plans that all the upper story units will meet the minimum requirement. The applicant has revised the plan to comply with most of the issues of concern that were discussed extensively at the last planning commission meeting, significantly that to do with accessibility. So it's a recommendation that at this time, the planning commission grant site plan and special exception approval for the proposed facade renovations and addition of upper and lower story apartments to the existing building located at 134 University Drive, subject to the following five conditions. Revise the site plan to show angled parking on the east side and increase the landscape area width abutting the window wells. Building official review and approval of the barrier-free access ramp designs. Revision to the parking calculations, as mentioned in my letter. Clarification regarding the stone cobble border and notation of landscape maintenance agreement. And finally, if any sign to be installed, it needs to be approved by the city administration or city staff. Conditions one through four must be addressed on a revised and dated site plan set that is submitted to the city for me to review and ensure that it meets the conditions of planning commission approval. I would be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Commissioners, do you have any questions for the planner at this point? Just a clarification, Vidya.
Yes.
The, the building official was quoting the requirements of the state of Michigan law, the handicap law. When saying that three of the four entrances had to be, so it's not local code, it's, it's at the state level, but that requirement is given to us.
Correct. ADA and barrier-free accessibility requirements are dictated into the state code and that is based on a federal law. So anytime more than 50% of a building's use is changed, at least 75% of all entrances must be barrier-free accessible.
Okay. The other question I have, this is the, the west parking lot.
Yes.
On the west side of the T. It's, I believe it exists right now as you're, as it's shown on the tonight's plan. It's 90-degree parking.
Correct.
It looks to me that you can only go into this section of parking and leave it one way, one, from one entrance way. If you're angled parked, you have to back out of here.
Exactly. Exactly. If you angle the west side parking lot, west side of the T, you would actually be boxed into that area once you enter. There is no way to exit it, which is why I recommended leave that alone. But the east side parking lot, which is currently angled, you can widen the aisle by one feet and make it actually conform because it's open at both ends. You won't get boxed in.
So what's, what you're suggesting is we leave it at 90 degrees as it currently exists?
Correct. On the west side of the building, yes, I agree. And you leave it as is.
Otherwise, they would have to somehow or another cut an exit into that section of parking, back out onto the driveway. Because you can't have people backing out. It just doesn't, that just doesn't work.
Exactly. And if you had to cut into the west side access drive, they would not only lose one to two parking spaces. The west side exit is already a little narrow. It's designed for one way. You'll have another curb cut coming into it, which might create a blind corner around the corner of the building. I would not advise it.
Mr. Chairman, I think Sienna was kind of circling the bottom part when Vidya was talking about the top part with the two handicap spots. I think that's what confused you. So it's the top part, looking at the screen, it goes back to angle like it is now.
Okay. Can you move the, Sienna, can you move this a little bit to the left? I can't see the front of the building. Little further, little further. Is there a sidewalk along the, this, the west side of the building now from the street inward or what is that, just a curb?
Yep, it's just a curb.
It's just a curb and there are window wells there, so I don't think there is enough room to squeeze on a sidewalk without losing some aisle width.
I just wondered what that new detail was. It's strictly a curb that's showing there.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, very good. Any other questions?
I do have one. Sticking with that west parking lot, the northernmost end where it says two high burning bushes at the edge of it. Is there a reason why that's not rounded off on the northernmost portion of that little island and it's more or less squared off? If you look at the rest of the site plan, everything seems rounded except for those two burns or islands, the one that says two high burning bush and then one opposite that says three high burning bush. You know, I'm thinking if you get a decent sized car or SUV or truck in there, you're probably going to have an interesting time turning out if there's another car anywhere in that area. And they'll be hitting the curb there all the time.
I think, what I think it's, Mr. Chairman, I think once it goes back to angle, that solves that, Matt. You're right, right now on a 90, that would be a problem, but when it goes back to the angle, I think that helps. It's an existing curb. People cut through there and go to the gas station.
I, I believe Nick, Matt is mentioning about the landscape island near the west side parking lot. As soon as you come out from the west side of the building, I think those bushes could be trimmed to maintain them no taller than three feet. Mr. Zantner, do you think that is feasible to trim those burning bushes so that it does not block sun?
Absolutely. As a matter of fact, I think the doctor's staff has already trimmed those bushes to comply with that comment from the last meeting. Also, those islands are existing islands and that's the way they were constructed with the, without the eased edges on the corners. Of course, good practice would, you'd like to do that, but that's an existing condition.
Okay, thank you.
See, Matt, I'm sorry, I was looking at, you're right, the other end. I see where you're at the bottom now. Okay.
No worries. Thanks, Nick.
Hey, any other, any other questions for the planner?
Do we have a revised elevation from University Drive?
Yes, I believe there is a revised elevation. Sienna, if you scroll down, it shows the ramp.
Right at the bottom of the sheet, yeah.
Can you drag it up a little bit?
Yeah. Yep.
There we go, nice.
And Mr. Chairman, I did approve outdoor dining on the patio for recipes as part of the DDA's effort to get more people on capacity for the restaurants. And you can see every day, there's, I think there are six tables out there and people are using it, so it's now a used patio, which is quite nice and it adds to the front of the building. You can see people sitting out there and they can use that until the end of October.
Okay, very good, very good. Mr. Chairman, Dr. Atala, you and your, your colleague there, do you have any comments for us, any updates for us on any of this?
Yeah, if you, if Dr. Atala, I'd like to just clarify a few points. On the, the east parking lot, the way it's been submitted currently is actually the existing condition. It is a 90-degree parked lot. What, what we had done before was try to accommodate a little more space for the area wells, but we managed to find a unit that could work within the, the amount of space that we had. So we're, we're keeping the parking in its current 90-degree condition. So, and I have that product. If, if you want to share the screen, I can show you what that product is and and how that looks. It's a Billco off-the-shelf unit that can be installed fairly quickly and without much disturbance to the planning. That's, that's why that, that's why that parking lot is drawn the way it is. That's actually the existing condition.
I have a question, please.
Yes.
So how far will the bumper blocks for the parking spaces on the east side of the B, of the building be from the basement window wells?
Well, it'd be about 42 inches.
So if you have a larger truck or a vehicle parked in one of those spaces, whoever has the basement apartment is literally only going to see the front grille of a vehicle.
Yeah, that, this is the, this is the dimension that we have there, but there's, there's, our concern is that the that the vehicle doesn't obviously impact the unit because there's a cover on the unit to prevent access that allows them to egress out, but doesn't allow people to get down into the area well for security reasons. So right now, they won't impact, but if you're, these are generally now considered truck parking areas. These are small vehicle cars or at the most maybe SUVs.
Oh, I'm sure if somebody visits a doctor's office or the building, they're going to squeeze themselves into the space, truck or not. I drive one and I do squeeze myself in, so believe me, it's not going to be a smart car parking there. My concern is, is there any reason why you would not do angled parking because you were still meeting your parking requirements, creating a decent landscape area around the window wells? What you previously proposed seemed like a better design for the basement apartments. And it seemed a better design for one-way circulation.
And Mr. Chairman, if I may, I just went on Google Earth. If you look at the existing conditions, that thought was not 90 degrees approved. You can, Robert, I agree that right now it's right that way, but at some time somebody just jury-rigged that in because it's not wide enough for a two-way aisle, like Vidya said. If you look at the curves at the north end, they're angled. It used to be angled one way a long time ago. I don't know when they got changed to 90, but I parked there to go to recipes. It's extremely difficult to get out. You don't have enough room to back out and back to back in aisle way, so it's got to go back to one way. The aisles, the, if you look at Google Earth, the, the actual islands are not what you have on your drawing. You're making them 90-degree there, but in the, in the existing conditions, they're angled already going towards the east. So I would report that that needs to go to angle and pick up the landscape. I support Vidya 100% on that.
Yeah, I, I think Nick makes a great point. At some point of time, maybe it went to 90-degree, but 90-degree parking in that area is not appropriate because trying to reverse out of those spaces would be near impossible in the aisle width that is there. I would suggest you go back to the angled parking. You will still meet all of your parking requirements and the basement apartments will be way more viable with fresh light and air, which is important.
I think we don't, what we don't want to do is rip out the curb work there. We can avoid it because this, it's a tremendous amount of money to us. If it's a matter of striping, I defer to Dr. Atala on that one.
Robert, I can tell you, if you look, it would cost you more money to make that. If you're looking in the dead center of the plan, that island, that is not how that island is now. It's on an angle on Google Earth, so you would have to build a new island, which would cost you more money. You can use the existing island that was the proper, so it's just striping. It will only be striping. You shouldn't have to do any island work.
So Nick, it can be said that an earlier site plan probably was approved with this as angled parking. And that a building operator probably coded over the lines and made it 90 degrees. So if we go back into the records, I suspect we'll find the approved site plan shows this as angled parking.
Yeah, and, and yeah, and again, the curbs are set up that way, so it'll save money. So I'll I bet you if I go back in Google Earth in time, I'm going to try it right now. Maybe I can find that area that shows that, but again, it wouldn't cost more money. It costs less money because you don't have to rebuild the island.
But what it comes down to is that the island is just not wide enough for two-way travel.
What, what we want to do is maintain that curb where it's at. We'd rotate our, our, our vehicle blocks night to match an angle if, if that's what it took to get that in there. And then that would still restrict the car from hitting the, the car or the area well, the light well.
Yeah, normally you can still put it on an angle, correct?
Right.
So we agree that the final approved plan tonight will have this as angled parking.
Correct.
Dr. Atala? Can you speak for the doctor? He's, he's on mute right now.
I, I, I don't see him.
He's talking, but he's muted.
Oh, okay. You're muted. You're muted, doctor.
Dr. Atala, click on the bottom left of your screen and it will say Dr. Atala, click on the bottom left of your screen and it will say audio unmute.
Or you can hold the space bar down. It's an easy way to pop in and out.
But I just found a picture from twenty fifteen, all angle parking. So Robert, you can go back to Google Earth. Twenty fifteen.
Can you hear me now? Thank you very much. So I've owned this building now for over thirty years. And I don't remember ever having those parking slots at an angle.
Doc, I'm looking at it right now on the computer, twenty fifteen, Google Earth, angle parking right there. I'm looking right at it. Twenty fifteen. I can say, I'm looking right at it and they're all angles.
Okay, then I don't remember that, but you know. I, I, I mean, we are gaining more parking space right now. All the big trucks. Park parallel to the building. They don't go where the small cars are. They really don't. They park and I tell you, UPS. Trucks for food, for recipes, they're always there. They come from university. Parallel park to the building, unload their material on their ham and then leave. The small cars have no problems. So gaining more spots, especially as we're getting crowded. I don't know if you've been. At daytime, we're very busy and now at nighttime with the restaurants. This is a shared parking with the restaurants, it was five, four, three. And for the whole downtown, whenever there's anything in downtown. They are in our parking lots, whether it's mine, university or main. So I mean, the more parking, the better is downtown.
Doctor, I think the problem is going to be that. With a little bit of looking, Nick can find a site plan that was approved with this as angled parking. And we have to return to that. That's not a choice tonight unless you wanted to resubmit again with that change in there. But if there's an existing site plan with angled parking and you can see that this was constructed that way. At some point in time, I think we have to, we have to go back to the angle parking.
Mr. Chairman, more than that, it's, you can't meet the code. The driveway is not, you don't have the driveway width. You're creating a non-conforming parking lot, which you don't even have the authority to do that. So. It's gotta go back to one way. And again, on the drawing that you're reviewing tonight, that costs more money because the two islands. At the north end of that one-way driveway aren't like that now. They are on angles. So you have to rip those out and build all new islands, a lot more money and it's still not conforming. So. It's really simple. Just go back and seal it and stripe it, no new islands and you'll be compliant with the. Now, and there should be a loading zone. If recipes need something, doc. If, if they're loading somewhere, they should be in a loading zone. I don't know how we have ability without a loading zone either.
I tell you, it's not just for their food. UPS is there all the time. FedEx is there all the time.
There should be a loading zone.
They actually use the space between the north and the south wing as a loading zone. Currently partially, but they're stopping like Dr. said, they're stopping parallel to that one-way driveway. We can't pull into the spots and then they continue on once they offload up the ramp.
Chairman McGee, if, if I may just speak up.
Yes, would you? Yeah, please.
I think with regard to loading, typically UPS and FedEx never pulls into a space. They just pull in, run and throw the parcel and they move out. So. I'm okay with that, but the angling of the parking. Is required because you cannot create a non-conforming ninety degree parking. You cannot have ninety degree parking with a nineteen foot wide aisle. That goes against planning. It goes against code. So. I know more parking spaces are desirable, but we are talking about a loss of only two or three. Then you're already meeting your parking requirement. So please go back to the angled parking with a minimum fifteen foot wide aisle or a wider aisle. I don't mind. With the change of apartments to the upper and lower story. There should be no ambiguity and people thinking because it's ninety degree, I'm going to try and get back out the way I got into the site. That confusion can be there for somebody who's not familiar with the site. So I think it's a simple fix. We are talking about striping the parking back to the correct way. If conformity can be achieved merely by striping, there's no reason not to do it.
Well, Vidya, I'm not, don't mean to interfere here, but. On July the sixth, we met. On July seven, we received through, uh, Sienna. A memo from you. And you had eight things listed in there. None of them talked about the striping you're discussing right now. If, if you feel it's important to do it, I am happy to comply.
Doctor, it's, it's mandatory that we do it. It absolutely has to be done. It was built that way originally and. For this, for this body to approve this plan, we have to move forward with that.
As a clarification, Dr. Atala, you changed the plan since July sixth to this plan. It was angled at the July sixth submission. You changed it. I did not ask you to change it to ninety degree.
We, we changed it actually to reflect what was existing condition and, and our understanding of the site that we didn't. Um, we had no recollection or no documentation that showed the angled parking. So that was our. Change to reflect the current condition because we were able to get the light well units in there. Without having to increase the buffer, but.
I must say that your, your records on this building have to show, as Nick just told us, that this was angled parking. My guess is if we want to take the time and do enough work. We'll find that a prior planning commission and planner. Said, for good reason, this has to be angled parking. You can see how the curbs are put in here at the south and north ends. On the west side of the parking lot and the north end of the, uh, east side of the parking lot. It's set up for angled parking. It's a narrow aisle. And it's allowed only because it was angled parking at a site plan approval earlier in time. We're asking you to return to that.
No problem. We'll, we'll, we'll comply, Mrs. Chairman.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, Dr. Tal, anything else? I, I think we've covered everything on here. I, I have to say, I appreciate you. Went along with the, uh, uh, the handicap entrance on Main Street. I think over time we all realize that. As this town downtown further develops, you know, a handicap entrance at your front door is extremely important. So any other questions for, uh?
Words, uh, Mr. Chairman. Uh, first I would like to. Can you hear me or you don't?
No, I can't. Go ahead and start.
Well, first I'd like to thank you for the amending, the, for amending the minutes. I appreciate that. The second thing is just, I, I need to give relief to everybody there about those burning bushes. I already reduced them to three feet and we found out that there are only two on each. On each place there, you know, and you can see now in between them, if the car is coming or a car is going. And they are pretty much sticks right now. Hopefully they'll survive. But everything else we've done, honestly, the plans reflected very nicely, you know? So I appreciate it. If you want me to talk more or answer any more questions or.
No, I don't know it actually.
Very good. Then let's go.
Okay, Robert, anything else from your technical angle here or you're all set?
No, I think, uh, we understand the parking issue. I think the two spaces that are nearest five, three, four, we've, they've been assigned. It's to five, three, four to serve that specific inch of the building. It won't affect us at all in terms of. The, uh, overall parking count will still have a surplus of, I think, six, four to six spaces when we turn it back to angle parking. And we do have a sign in our documents on the elevation that replaces the Rochester Medical Center. Uh, sign with the name of the project now as the. Um, one, three, four lofts at Pancrick Village, which is on the elevation. And it was in a correspondence, but was submitted specifically for signage approval, uh, as a, to, to the administration. It was a separate item and, uh. Yeah, so I think everything else we've discussed.
Sienna, did you get, do you have a call?
I did. I actually received an email. Um, I can read it for you guys now. Um, it said. Hi, my name is Mike Daly. My wife, Colleen Daly, and I have lived at Five O Eight Quarter Street. For a little over thirty years. We are small business owners as well. We had our offices on Main Street for nearly twenty years before moving to an office building located in Rochester Hills. We are very aware of the responsibilities and obligations. The city of Rochester and the Downtown Development Authority have to property owners, homeowners and business owners located in our city as well. As to all its citizens. Please register our full support for the proposed residential developments at one thirty-four West University. We believe the city and the DDA need to fully support the development and expansion by existing property and business owners in our city. Before being direct competition to those taxpayers and business owners already contributing taxes and DDA fees as well as. Customers, employees, services, et cetera, to our city for many years. Um, they also wrote about other, um, forthcoming items, but that is all they stated about one thirty-four, you know, West University.
Thank you very much for bringing that forward to us.
You're welcome.
Commissioners, uh, any more questions or does anyone want to move this forward? Mr. Mayor? Mayor, you're on mute.
All right. Sorry about that. I will make a motion to move this forward.
So that would be to, uh, motion to approve site plan and, uh, and, uh, special exception, Vidya. Is that the language we need?
Yes. Site plan and special exception subject to the Mekana review letter dated July sixteenth, twenty twenty.
Okay, and that included the return to the angled parking?
Yes.
Okay, so it has been moved. Do we have support?
Support.
You're starting to support it? Any further discussion on this motion? Could we have the roll call, please?
Yes. Mayor Bixson?
Yes.
Matthew Stone?
Yes.
Chairman McGee?
Yes.
Uh, Patricia Clark Martin?
Yes.
Christian Hauser.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Doctor, good luck to you. We hope you're the first of several down there, but.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
I think it's a terrific use of the property. Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I appreciate it.
Uh, next item is number six miscellaneous. Does anyone have any miscellaneous? Other than you want to go home?
I've got one quick one for you, um, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Uh, this, uh, earlier this week I got a call from Mr. Fred Toma at the BP station. He was very excited about. The contractors finally wriggled themselves free to get working on the, on his renovation that was approved by the planning commission. Um, if you remember, it's going to take stone, put stone columns on the overhangs. A stone base under the sign, stoning the building. He reduced part of the retail space and everything was going great until Tuesday afternoon. They're on that approved elevation. He was keeping that existing peak that wasn't our favorite, but he was keeping it. That said, Busheem is on it. And when the contractor got up, they called me out there and there's a significant amount of rot in that peak. So they had two options. They could redo the whole peak or it was in the discussion we had, um. On the approval, it, that didn't really fit in with the rest of the building. It had a flat cornice around it. So he was willing to bring. The whole thing down and square it off. I told him he'd have to come back to the planning commission for revised elevation. So the architect's working on that now. If you see it look different already, it's because they took the rot out while the contractor was on site, but. For the August first meeting, hopefully he'll bring back a revision. He'll submit that little revision to the building official. He was already good with it. So. Just so you know that we are watching and he called us and said, hey, I got a problem here. I think it's a great. Addition actually, but we'll do it officially by bringing it back to you.
Okay, um, how long has it been since we approved that?
Oh, probably last fall. So he couldn't start until the spring and he's rolling now. It's, it's really coming along nice.
So he doesn't have to re-present the entire site plan again?
Correct. Uh, we can just write a quick revised elevation on that one piece.
Very good. Thanks for bringing that up. What else do you have?
That's it.
Okay, uh, these other items that are listed on the agenda, will we see those in August? River Place?
I actually miscellaneous for you though, Dennis. Um. So, uh, it, I guess, uh, we actually interviewed two firms for the traffic slash transportation study.
Yeah.
So we, um, have yet to make a full decision, I don't believe, but I think that. Um, Blaine is going to take that to city council, I believe, um, sometime in August. Um, I would defer to Blaine for the actual dates. Um, however, uh. We, I think we're close to making a decision for that, but, um, we just wanted to let you guys know that we were moving along with the traffic study for bigger developments.
In, in addition, we also, uh, are bringing the two finalists for the master plan to city council and they'll be interviewing. Um, them at this upcoming Monday nights meeting.
Okay, thank you.
I will also send you guys that, um, Zoom meeting information as well for the city council. So you guys can look at that if you would like to as well. Um, additionally, I'm rolling into item number eight. Um, riverfront plans are in and I actually am going to send those to you all tomorrow. So you guys can look at those prior to the actual regular meeting packet. I will also be sending the last minutes from March when they had their public hearing. So you guys can. See what took place at that meeting, um, and look at the new plans and then in August, they will be on that agenda.
August third, the first meeting?
Yes.
Okay, very good.
Um, and I guess to keep going, uh, you did say number eight. Um, so Riverfront is coming back. Um, the site plan for the city hall vestibule addition will be on there. Um, there will be amendments that Nick just, uh, mentioned for the BP gas station. In addition to the multi-family project that we had as a discussion item at our last meeting for twelve oh five North Main.
Very good. Okay, we continue to be busy. Any other, uh, items, miscellaneous items for, uh, for the commission? And then I'll mention again, any other public comment other than the one, uh, comment, Sienna, that you mentioned?
Nope.
Okay, thank you very much. Well, unless anyone's clamoring to spend another fifteen minutes or a half hour here, I think we're done. So we appreciate your, uh, your coming in, making yourself available on this beautiful summer evening. And, uh, we'll see you on August third. And with that, this meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.
Goodbye.